Box says 10 o'clock.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Jeanette, are we good to go? All right, so we have the consent agenda in front of us. Are there questions? Have you had a chance to review them?
The move second.
Motion by Wickman, a second by Shay to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. First up, we've got discussion and our decision on disaster recovery response and FEMA declaration, and Doug Reed is apparently solving other problems. We will move, when he arrives, we'll put him into the agenda where it fits. I know he's got a lot on his plate today. So we will move directly to Mark Ekman, Executive Director, Council of Convention and Visitors Bureau, discussion and our decision to approve and sign proclamation designating the week of May 19th to the 25th as Visitor Bureau's Week. And I see you have brought Emma Schaller with you as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board members for considering that proclamation. And since I came, I just thought I would just give you a quick update on tourism activities during National Travel and Tourism Week, May 19 through the 25th. You've got some PowerPoint slides in front of you, at least copies of those. On page two, this is generally where I always start with the report, just to reiterate what our focus is in terms of what we try to do, but it also applies to the Potawatomi Tourism Committee. We're all about bringing new customers to local businesses. And those new customers come in the form of travelers that have come at least 50 miles or farther from home. That's what makes them new. And when they arrive, they almost all become new taxpayers because who remembers to bring everything with them when they're traveling? And when they do, and they're shopping, they have to pay the local option sales tax. And when you add those two benefits together, that benefits all local residents throughout the county. And that's essentially why we do what we do. And while we might be outwardly facing, as a CBB and well as a County Tourism Committee, we always have a local purpose in mind of serving local businesses, local government, as well as ultimately all local residents. On page three, the value of those new customers is more than $329 million according to Tourism Economics in calendar year 2022. And who would want to have that evaporate, to leave our economy? And so we want to keep it and we want to grow it. And just as an example of how things have been growing here lately, in fiscal year 2023, the city of Council Bluff saw a record amount of hotel motel taxes collected of more than $3.4 million that followed a record-setting amount the previous fiscal year. So it certainly is going in the right direction. And so far through this fiscal year, they're keeping track with fiscal year 2023. In fact, halfway through the year, they're about $32,000 ahead. So that's certainly a good sign despite the fact that we've got inflation and high interest rates eroding away from that discretionary spending that fuels the ability to travel. Going on to the next slide, I just want to make you aware that unleashcb.com, the CBB website, which serves both locals and visitors, has recently been redesigned. And it's made it more intuitive, easier to navigate, and also be able to provide more content, again, for both locals and visitors. And in fact, in fiscal year 2022, we had 1,390 events listed on that. And so you could really say that's truly a county-community calendar. And I say that because there's just two stipulations for anyone to promote an event on there. One, it's open to the public. And two, that it takes place not just in Council Bluff, but it takes place in Potawatomi County. And so any events, whether they come from Carson, they come from Crescent, they come from Walnut, Council Bluff, they can be listed on the website. And thus far through May, or not even through the end of May yet, we have more than 1,400 events. So we're going to set another record this year and likely to surpass 1,500 events by the end of the fiscal year. If you want to, check out the redesigned website to scan the QR code with your smartphone, and you can navigate it very easily, not just on a laptop or desktop computer, but your smartphone as well. Going on to slide five. Mark Shoemaker and I were here to talk about the Iowa Tourism Awards. But it bears repeating the good news from Martin, that Mount Crescent won the Outstanding Attraction Award in the rural category. Phenomenal job, where you had revenues more than double the expenses and able to provide a 25% return to the county for your investment. And then, of course, Mount Crescent made it possible for the CBB to launch its very first 2023 Winter Travel Marketing Initiative. We've never done one in the winter. When we need the business the most, we've done spring, summer, and fall. But winter did exceptionally well. We created 1.4 million digital marketing impressions through that campaign. And then finally, the Outstanding Marketing Collaboration Award went to the 2023 Omaha Metropolitan Area Tourism Awards, a collaboration that involves the County Tourism Committee, Visit Omaha, and Serpice County Tourism. And if you don't recall, we had some big winners throughout the entire county. The best attraction went to the Phoenix Theater in Carson. The best restaurant, what's that?
Dreamland.
Dreamland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They were in the running this year.
They were in the running. Thank goodness I have Emma. Dreamland Theater. And then Back Forty was the best restaurant in Macedonia. And then the best retail business in Traynor was the Occasional Collective. All three great winners. And just to throw a bone to Council Bluff, the Ameristar Casino Hotel won Best Hotel. That brings me to the 2024 winners of the Omaha Metropolitan Area Tourism Awards, which are being announced today, this week, throughout the week. We're celebrating those as a part of National Travel and Tourism Week. And I'm happy to report to the board that the best attraction was Mount Crescent Ski Area, another accolade to add to the great work that's being done there. The best hotel, Holiday Inn Hotel and Suites at Ameristar, a second-time winner. They originally won in 2021 and then became eligible again this year. The best restaurant, again, another second-time winner, Pizza King, which also won in 2021 and became eligible again. And then the best retail business is the unique Boutique Iowa in Neola. What a great story that is. Jamie Bush being an entrepreneurial individual who started off with a pop-up and then migrated into a brick-and-mortar store in downtown Neola. So a great story there and just helps make our celebration of National Travel and Tourism Week that much better. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Madam Chair, regarding the proclamation. And I want to thank you for issuing that to help us celebrate the week.
Thank you for the update.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, so I have the proclamation in front of me. And I would like to read it, and then we'll take a motion to accept it. 2024 National Travel and Tourism Week proclamation. Whereas the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of Potawatomi County's economy, development, and workforce being at the crossroads of interstates 80 and 29. Whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of $2.8 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs and generating $89 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2023, according to the U.S. Travel Association. Whereas Potawatomi County realized $329.62 million in direct spending by travelers in 2022, according to Tourism Economics, the fifth highest of Iowa's 99 counties and part of the state's $6.9 billion in direct traveler spending that in turn supported small businesses, which account for more than 60% of leisure and hospitality employment. Whereas travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits both small and large businesses, produces local sales tax revenue, and fosters mutual understanding by connecting the nation. Therefore, the Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 19th to the 25th, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Potawatomi County, and urge county citizens to join me in recognizing the essential role this industry plays. Simply put, travel means business.
I'll make a motion to approve that proclamation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Ben Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors Belt?
Aye.
Wickman?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
And Jordan?
Aye.
Motion has carried. We will sign this proclamation, and would you like to take it with you?
Yes, please.
I think Craig wants to take a picture.
I already contacted your agent, said I did.
All right.
Oh.
And right in front of Susan.
Oh.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Emma.
Thank you.
I'm always looking for tourists down in the 100. Basically down there.
All right. We're moving. That was on the agenda, so we'll.
Now in that area, would that help?
Down on the spot.
It could maybe be.
Well, we're thinking of a morning, sorry for a lesson of your agenda. Email to the office with some schedule changes or anything with the. Seeing the county alone. So get ready for some more this afternoon. It's, everything's holding true, and it's, we're starting to see some sun peeking out. So I don't think this morning, Dren's gonna die on potential severe weather. He's happening too much, so we'll probably have another round of severe weather here with the afternoon. And I would imagine, but except all that fun and exciting news, Martin sent you an email.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Where to start? So we continue to have Small Business Administration and FEMA field teams out working. They're going to shoot me some updated numbers of the households and registrations and contacts I made for the Individual Assistance Program after they did a team briefing, and they just kind of reconciled their numbers a little bit. So that'll be in today's daily report, yeah.
I came in, there was a couple of people from FEMA outside.
Probably.
Okay, I didn't know if they were supposed to be in with you or not.
No, they were probably just over here doing.
Okay.
Doing what they.
All right.
They'll be all over.
Thank you.
So the next, next couple of days, they're going to continue to concentrate in the northwest part of the county and in the area. Then, once we get the Mobile Disaster Recovery Center in, it's Menden tomorrow, where people can register on-site there and get some assistance, which should be 1:00 tomorrow afternoon. We were gonna try and do it today, but with, with the weather and everything, we switched it off today instead of driving their big old vehicle from Des Moines out here and just have to pull up stakes and go somewhere else. So those field teams then will start to branch out into other areas of the county that maybe didn't have direct tornado damage. But we know we've had some other moderate damages, just to kind of make sure that we're doing our due diligence and grabbing everybody we can that might need some assistance from their program. I know through the Iowa Individual Assistance Grant Program and the Disaster Case Advocacy Program that goes with it, we've registered, you know, a couple of people, or at least have them apply for the grant from like Oakland and Avoca and some of those areas that would have some maybe wind and hail damage, things like that as well. So they're going to start branching out all over the county. So you might see them in places like, well, what are they doing here? The tornado was way over there. But, but there's, there's some other things for them to look at as well and help promote programs. People that might not be connected yet. Everything's going well in Menden. They're kind of done hauling out construction debris. For the most part, they're working on vegetative debris right now and some things like that. Depending on the weather, they anticipated that we'd be done with debris operations in Menden by the end of this week. But a couple of days of weather might, might push that off. So, so that's going well, too. Still have one volunteer team out working in kind of the northwest part of the county, helping out folks that they've got scheduled to provide assistance for. And outside of that, we continue to try and work with, with the state and FEMA to get the Public Assistance Program turned on, which would be good news for the county as well as great news for Menden to try and get that. So, you know, we've got a county per capita threshold to meet and then a statewide. And, you know, it's all the potential losses after insurance proceeds. So that's a lot of stuff to get through. And sometimes, like we're even experiencing here, getting some decent even estimate numbers from insurance folks just takes longer than the process will allow. And so that's something that we're kind of fighting as well. And Garfield's been real good about staying on top of the county's person, trying to push them for that data. But, but we've got some good estimates out there because, because his shop's been doing, doing a good job trying to get that figured out. So depending on how that stuff shakes out, we'll see what it is. I know I have engaged our federal delegation, their staff, to try and do what they can do to help promote our request, because I think it's going to be important for Menden especially, but also everything that the county's done as well. Obviously not as significant financial impacts as what Menden's going to have to deal with, but nonetheless impacts. And it all affects our budgets, our operations, projects that we already have planned to better, to better the county and our jurisdiction. So if we can get it recouped to some degree, then, then that's what we want to try and do. So we keep working on that as well. Outside of that, today's focus is really going to be shift and what's going to happen today and what's that look like? So it's just one of those springs, one that we haven't had in a long time. Yeah. It's going to be much older than I am and retired before we have the spring. But, but there's, there's a lot of good folks in our cities and a lot of good folks that work for the county that are doing some amazing things out there to help people. And it's the partnerships and communication that we have is amazing compared to some of the stories that I hear from, from some of my peers. So, so it's a good thing. And no matter what happens in this county or even our communities, we'll get through it. And that's a, that's a pretty good place to live, if you ask that. So I'm probably sure I'm missing about 100 things that you might have questions on. I know one thing I would like to ask for is the board to entertain a motion to extend the disaster declaration for another 30 days. As we still continue to do some work, we have severe weather continuing, and as we pursue a public assistance declaration to add on to the current federal designation, it'll be important that way, that way we're just covered in capturing costs that are ongoing in, in relation to the April 26th event as well as that, so.
Would this flooding be included in that, or would that be a whole new declaration?
If, if it warranted, it'd be a whole new declaration. The only time they, that, that you ever get kind of one of those declarations that covers kind of multiple incidences, if it can be shown in the, in the climate data, that it was all part of kind of one just continuous system that was doing it. And certainly, we don't have that connection between the tornadoes of April 26th and May 6th. And it's the same thing with today's events, right? So if we had something like today and the kind of storms in the front hung around into tomorrow, and we had another one then, you know, that, they'd probably consider that one deal with this thing to be all separate, so. And so we, we've already had a good conversation with Secondary Roads this morning, and they're out looking at stuff from these, you know, latest potential impacts. From this morning storms, I know, at least I can verify that there were three schools that went into, you know, a delayed start just because of the conditions, especially in the rural areas, some of the flash flooding that we've seen. I know trying to get to a house fire and some things like that, that there were, there were some crossing issues for the city fire department here in some of those areas that have street flooding and those kind of things. We have high water. Of course, Menden had some street flooding this morning because obviously the tornado put a whole bunch of stuff down their storm sewer system, and that was a problem. And, you know, outside of town, it was kind of flooded and crossing, crossing the road, too. So, so plenty of impacts this morning, number. So we'll, we'll see what this afternoon brings and do that. But again, back to the declaration. It would just need to be just a motion and a motion to authorize the chair to, to extend that proclamation for another 30 days. I'll be doing the same thing with Menden here after I get done with this meeting, so. And then, of course, with everything going on, I think we cleared our last tornado warnings out of the county this morning at 1:00 in the morning, and then it kicked back up again about 5:00 or so, a little, or just before 6:00. So I don't have it all eyes dotted and t's crossed for you, but I'll get it over here in just a second.
With that, I'd make a motion to ask the chair to sign the declaration to extend that another 30 days.
Yes.
Can we, can we do that then because of the emergency situation then? Because it's not on the agenda?
It is on the agenda as discussion and/or decision on disaster recovery response at FEMA declaration. We've left it open on the agenda in case we need to take immediate action.
I'll do a second on that.
Do you agree, Kristin?
I'll do a second on that.
What was the, what was the deadline on the first one, Doug?
It was set for 30 days. We did it evening of the 26th, so it'd be coming up. And since we have the holiday weekend and, and meetings and stuff, it was just best to maybe do it now until we come right up to the date in the holiday and, and that kind of stuff. So preemptive steering.
Are we required to put a expiration date on that?
We're probably not, but it's a good idea.
30 days.
60 days? What do you want?
Whatever you want. 30 days, I think, would be adequate.
Extend for 30 days on that motion.
It's typically, typically in our, in our plan or anything that's even with the city. We try to keep it as consistent as possible. So most, all the jurisdictions, we usually do 30 days. Council Bluff is different. Mayor's proclamation goes for 15 days because of the city ordinance language that they have in there. So we gotta do that a little more, a little more frequently.
I, I got one question. Based on your email that you'd sent. Has there been anybody in to do a guesstimate on the value of the water plant situation?
Yeah, yeah. So, so they, they've had some rudimentary estimates, right, you know, immediately, right? So anecdotal stuff. We know what the, the insurance valuation, the statement of value is. They've gotten other estimates, and they engage probably within the first, I, I would say the second week of, of the actual event. They'd already had contact, and we had it, the engineering firm that the city works with on different projects in to start engineering a new water treatment plant. So you got to get those things figured out before we figure out how, how that all can be paid for and figure out what insurance is going to cover, what's not, where the gap in the federal declaration on the public side. You know, so they're, they're working on that, and I believe that there was, there's a meeting scheduled today, this afternoon, or tomorrow, with the city's engineer that's looking at that specifically. Because I've got a couple of state homeland security staff over in my office right now. You know, that they were going to go, they're on the recovery side of their program. They were going to go be part of that meeting to help capture some of the costs and, and see what that's going to look like, so.
Great, too.
Outside of that, you reminded me of a meeting Thursday. You all should have received an email invite for a meeting on Thursday at the EOC, or you can join by Zoom for a discussion, just to coordinate the long-term recovery operations that will certainly be continuing. When you think about housing, infrastructure, all those things. So, so that will occur just to kind of set the tone for getting the right people in the right groups to address issues, you know, much like we did with the multi-agency resource centers, that kind of a deal, you know, what, what's your organization specialized in? What can you bring to the table? And which of your organizations can partner so we can be, you know, is more, more effective and efficient in trying to, to, so, you know, help Menden out, but also anything that we see in the rural areas and those kind of things when it comes to infrastructure, housing, you know, ongoing health, municipal health type of needs. It's everything on the table. So we'll have that discussion. That meeting starts at 10:30. As I mentioned in the letter, I'd prefer local officials come to the EOC. That way, if we just need to have a, you know, afterwards, conversation about a couple of things or, or some decisions, that we can have that inspection, whatever works best for you. It'd be a good conversation for you to at least listen to or forward to, so.
And that wasn't an Outlook meeting invite. It was an email with the information in it.
Yes, yeah. And there were just so many people to invite to that thing, and then some of their emails kick it back, and I never know who does or who doesn't. And so it's just, I just put it in the letter and sent it today. And then, then it could be easily forwarded to somebody if they think, well, they should probably attend. Just, okay, go ahead and bring it, so.
Jeanette, will you need to post that meeting? All right.
Questions?
I'm sure you got plenty on your plate. And on your dessert plate, too. Hopefully, we'll get the frosting from the feds.
I tell you what, I'm more encouraged than I was in the immediate aftermath.
In the, after the message you sent?
What's that?
After the message you sent? You more encouraged now?
To our legislative delegation?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I, you know, it's, it's still, you know, because of the numbers and the policy, it's still going to be an uphill fight. We're just up the hill a lot more than I thought we'd be at this point. So, so now would be the time, since they're in a position to, you know, help speak to those decisions or, or to communicate better directly in DC about what the needs at the local level are. You know, that's what they're there for. They've always said, whatever you need, we'll send you to help. So I sent them the message. Said, here's what you can have. So, so that, that hopefully, hopefully they'll, they'll get on that. And I know they've been invited to this meeting Thursday, too, because they've got an interest in the long-term recovery stuff. So outside of that.
Perfect.
Get the ball rolling. I'm going to go talk to the weather service and see what this afternoon's going to look like as we get closer. And I wanted to mention, since you passed a resolution for these folks up here, how great a partners that they are against my program, especially with the website. One of our primary direct sources to get large community events in our daily operations brief that you all see and that our public safety sees, because it's amazing how many things get scheduled that people really don't have awareness of in the general sense, even, even in the government sector and public safety sphere. And so a lot of things have been noticed because of the work they do in the name of, you know, that to help push our preparedness forward. So it's a lot more than just the dollars and the cents. They're, they're truly a partner in preparedness and public safety as well with the work that they do. And we saw that, you know, even during COVID and the things that they did to help us with hotels and events and those kind of things. So kudos to them and the work that they do. Because whenever I need to know if there's something big going on, because we got junky weather or we need details on a thing, we just call them and they give us the information that we need on it. And, and then everybody's on the same page, so. I just haven't seen them for a while, so I want to give you a shout out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Along those lines, Paula Hazelwood is here to talk about Advanced Southwest Iowa. And I know that Shalimar has been boots on the ground in Menden and Crescent.
And I believe you got my email for Thursday. And I believe I asked Dominic Dossel to forward it to Shalimar because I didn't have her email, so. So, yeah, so.
Lot of good partners in the room.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, so Advanced Southwest, I, I can't even see. You could probably look through the, who I sent it to, because I didn't hide any of that stuff in a blind copy, but there's just a ton of people, right? And it's, it's pretty much everybody we've kind of got identified in our plan that have done recovery work previously so I'm sure there's some organizations out there that didn't get on the list, but we'll find out who they are and get them in the fold as soon as we can.
All right, so we have a motion by Shay and a second by Bill to extend the disaster declaration from May 26, 2024 for 30 days. Additional discussion?
Is that a, that a roll call? That works, David?
No, it, it doesn't have to be one of those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
See you later.
See you. See you Thursday.
Thanks for playing along, you guys. It's good.
Susan, one, one thing I'd like to add to Doug left is that the county right now. No, not sixty left. Sorry about that. Tried to catch him, but, uh, the last couple of weeks I've gone around with the adjuster, looking at county property for its damage. We're looking at at least about eighteen different properties that the county owns, uh, and various from roofs to gutters to siding and stuff like that. And some nine-one-one tires and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make you aware that we have at least eighteen properties. So I'm working with two different adjusters for two different dates. The one for the courthouse, that was a win. And then the tornado one is about eighteen properties. And then I got Jake out today looking for other property from this morning. So it's, it's kind of busy. So.
Keep on, Dirk. Good job.
Eighteen, uh?
Yep. Right now we're tracking eighteen. Uh, the adjuster and I, we went from a, a mile radius from where the tornado went through, and we looked at all the property.
Did any of them include conservation then?
Yes, conservation. Yeah, we got some, some property damage out of conservation as well. I'm working with the adjuster. He's finalizing his report with I C A P, and I should have that soon once we start crunching numbers and I, I get that to the board.
Great. Thank you.
Scott, can you hand me a clean up?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, Paula Hazelwood, CEO and Shalamar Mizettis, manager, rural development, Advanced Southwest Iowa Corporation. Presentation and brief update from Advanced Southwest Iowa Corporation.
Yes. Good morning. So you can clearly see that Shalamar is not here with me this morning. Um, unfortunately, her two-year-old daughter suffered a medical emergency over the weekend, and so she's been in the hospital. Thankfully got out yesterday, but, um, so Shalamar is out, off work this week and rightfully so. So. Um, I'm here to provide, um, our advances year-to-date update, and I'm not texting. All my notes are on my phone, just so you know. Um, I want to talk about some initiatives that we have and then go into our, uh, year-to-date projects, active pipeline, um, landed projects. And then Shalamar actually did send me some updates. So when I'm done with this, I'll pop onto her email and read, read you what she actually sent me. Um, as far as initiatives, we are still actively working on the Rural Potawatomi County Infrastructure Coalition. There is a community project check-in scheduled, um, for early July with all of the five, um, communities that receive funding. Um, we did have a meeting this past week with Minden just because of the, um, circumstances that they're currently unfortunately enduring. Um, they did receive some R P C I C funds and, um, they have an extended period to allocate and to utilize, utilize those funds, which I do believe most of them have already been expended. Um, but the group that met did agree that if we have to extend their deadline, then we would definitely do so. Uh, I don't think we're going to, going to have to, but we may. So just so you know that in the back of your mind. Um, the city of Crescent with their project, um, they are currently exploring some new technology for their lagoon system. And so the numbers that they initially applied for very well may change at some point. Um, and if that is the case, Shalamar expected to maybe hear back by the end of this month. If that was going to be the case with the new numbers, much less than they initially anticipated, hopefully with this new technology. But we won't know probably for at least another two weeks. So, and I don't know, Matt Wyatt, did you attend that meeting at all with the, you did?
With, not with the city, no.
Okay. There was a public meeting to, to review kind of what the city was looking at.
Right. It's coming up. Has it happened yet?
Oh, yeah. It might be next week.
I think it's Wednesday evening.
Like tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. I know it was sometime, but I just thought it would be interesting to see what technology is being proposed for that. Because if that is the case, obviously we would have other communities that, you know, might be interested in that as well. So.
So.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the vibrant rural communities, I E vibe program, which is the former cities program, and we're really trying to kind of remove the city's equation from it. So it's, it's vibe now, um, which is a collaboration between, um, the Iowa West Foundation and Advanced Southwest Iowa Corporation and McClure Engineering. Um, we have a quarterly meeting scheduled, which is, uh, tomorrow, actually, um, in Walnut. And, um, so there are some economic development projects that are going to be discussed. And, um, McClure Engineering has put together a very nice and comprehensive list of potential, uh, additional funding sources that we will be handing out, um, to those in attendance, which are city clerks, mayors, uh, planners from the various rural communities. So we'll have a, a pretty healthy discussion about the projects that they potentially will want to submit for, um, the Vibrant Rural Communities Program through the Iowa West. Yeah, it's in Walnut. Um, over the lunch hour, right? If you need more information, let me know, and I'm happy to send that to you. But that program is actually going very well. I mean, it's still new to us, so we're learning and, and developing things as, as, uh, as we go. But it's, it's shaped up actually to be pretty good. And then we actually are continuing to work on our coworking space. Um, we had to start all over again with our design because our design firm built, our design build firm that we were utilizing, our top two guys left. And so there was nobody there that knew kind of what was going on. And so we have engaged field day development to help us along the project management, uh, process. And then we have hired, uh, D V O L to do our, uh, architectural work. And then the general contractor will yet to be determined. So we're waiting for our new estimates. We've raised uh, close to seven hundred thousand dollars for the project. And so we're hoping that we have enough to actually kick off construction. Um, but we will be back again to let you know and update you on that process as we move forward. Any questions thus far?
You can, I will.
The people.
You move?
Yeah.
B I?
B O L D. Uh, year-to-date projects, which are through April thirtieth of this year, we currently have sixty-four projects in our active pipeline. Good mix of, uh, expansion projects and new-to-market projects and anything from startup entrepreneur to a mid-sized company all the way up to big corporate, uh, projects that we are working. Um, of the projects that we were, we've, uh, worked on this year, we've landed six of those projects, which equate to seventy-seven point seven million in investment, capital investment. And please note, that is not assessed value. That is a combination of those six projects in what those companies have told us that they plan to expend, uh, spend on their projects. So again, I always like to separate that because sometimes when I say those numbers, you know, people might think that it's assessed value, but it is not. Um, seventy-seven point seven million in capital investment, a hundred and thirty-three new and/or retained jobs. So those projects are, uh, a medical facility that's going to be building at twenty-fourth and Richard Downing. Um, and I know that Mr. Supervisor Wickman is always very interested in the incentive component of it. That is an urban revitalization zone, so they would be, um, they would be eligible for a tax abatement, um, if they so choose to apply for one. They also did get targeted jobs from the state of Iowa.
What was that address?
Uh, twenty-fourth and Richard Downing, right on the corner. You know what I'm talking about? Just north of Amazone.
On that same side?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
They're taking that whole, that whole piece?
No, the front, the front twenty.
Okay.
They're on the corner of twenty-fourth and, and Richard Downing, right on the corner, as you turn to go down to the ball fields.
Yeah, between there and the ball.
The front edge lot.
Well, hopefully they'll leave the doors for parking in for the sports complex.
I think they're working out an arrangement with them because, uh, obviously there's a lot of overflow parking there. So.
There's a lot of parking problems out there.
Yeah. Uh, Martin Solvents on Ninth Avenue is in process of putting up a new office structure on their site, on their facility. Um, Shalamar worked with Bertelson's Processing out of Underwood. That was landed. Uh, Project Summit is a new coffee, uh, shop that is going up, um, kind of in the parking lot of Sherwood Plaza here in Council Bluffs. And then, um, Lizard Licks is a, a retail, um, outfit. They do dehydrated candy. It's very, a couple of very young entrepreneurs that have got a, a good thing going for them. So, and Nikki obviously was able to work, work on that. They operate out of their homes, so I don't know exactly where. But it's in Ropok County. I just don't know exactly where. Um, and then pipeline projects that we continue to work on, these are mine specific to the city of Council Bluffs. Um, we've been working with T S L, which is a logistics firm for a really long time. Um, they own a prop, piece of property off of the South Expressway and I eighty. Um, finally, the grading is getting underway for that project. So it's an intermodal, um, facility. Um, The Oaks, which is a cold storage project that was slated for East South Manawha Drive. Um, the warehouse distribution market, um, kind of went south a little bit. The, the tide changed a little bit for us, probably in late twenty twenty-three and then into twenty twenty-four. Um, and that project was put on hold, but it is back online again. So it may not be exactly the same as they initially proposed, but I still see it as the anchor being a cold storage facility. And then four other ambient buildings are being slated. So it's more of a campus than, than anything, but East South Manawha Drive is where the proposed development would be. Project Van is a warehouse distribution, um, facility. They have a parcel off of Hunt Avenue under option. I talked to them this morning, actually. And they've also done a revised plan, and so they will be, um, submitting that to the city for, for review in the very near future. Project Leading Edge is, um, this is actually kind of a cool, a cool little project, but it's an existing business here in town. They needed to relocate and expand because they need to expand. And in their current facility off of Ninth Avenue, that does not allow them to do so. So I was able to find them a larger facility that happens to have another existing business in it that's doing their own expansion. So once, uh, and it's in Sherwood Plaza. So once the existing company moves to their new facility, which is south of town, then this other councilless company will move into the Sherwood facility, which is about twenty-two thousand square feet, I believe. Um, and then the facility that they're in, there's a joint business there, and that business will be expanding. So it's, it's kind of that circle of life with these type of things. And it's, um, those things make me happy. I know I'm a nerd, but I can't stand it.
Who's the other Sherwood Plaza one that you started out with?
That again?
There's a new one that's Sherwood Plaza that you started out with?
Yeah, they're, they're an existing company that is in the process of moving into Sherwood Plaza once the existing company moves to their new location.
Oh, was that the coffee shop?
No, totally different project.
Sherwood Plaza, though?
Yep.
But they're building a, a new building, the coffee shop or?
Yes. Kind of in the parking lot, right in the center of the parking lot. Yeah.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's Nikki's worked on that project from day one. And I mean, it's, the guy's really good. Yeah, there is a lot going on in Sherwood, which is not a bad thing.
No. Bob Gores is my favorite store.
It's full. It's full, right? I mean, he and her, yeah, for better than that. Um, we have two big technology projects that we're working on. One is very far along, and that's the Iowa Western project. Um, and then the other one, I'm still kind of in the due diligence phase, but they have an L O I in on five hundred acres of property, um, South Council Bluff. So, which is good. We have a technology company, a small office that's looking at space in the Rivers Edge Building. Um, and we have a very large manufacturing project that we're working on for a hundred ninety-second street. So more than likely, I'm gonna be coming in to talk to Matt about a few things that I think, uh, you know, we need to chat about for sure. Uh, Project Catnip is a manufacturing company, and I've submitted a couple of sites for that. Project Transfer is a service-based company that is doing an expansion relocation here, and they have a piece of property in South Wayne under option currently. Um, and then Project Advisor is another smaller technology company. So as you can see, kind of the trend here, technology, technology, technology. So that has kind of taken over our logistics piece that we had for a number of years. We still have some logistics, but technology definitely is the hot button right now. Um, any questions on any of those projects? Yes, sir.
I do have one. Paula, the, you mentioned the, uh, project on East South Omaha Bridge. What was that?
On East South Manawha Drive?
Oh, I thought you said east, east South Omaha Bridge.
No, East South Manawha Drive.
Big difference.
Yeah, that's, I think, that's the cold storage campus.
I mean, we, we have traffic trouble there and for some reason I heard East South Omaha Bridge. Okay.
Paula?
Yes, sir.
Are you done, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Hundred ninety-second, is that city or county?
Um, it's a little of both. It just depends on where you are.
Okay.
Um, but if we have this large manufacturing project, um, move forward, there's a lot of collaboration that's gonna have to happen regarding infrastructure improvement. So I anticipate the city, the county, Mills County, all being involved in those discussions. So we're at the early stages of it. Um, the company themselves have been in for a visit. I think that was two weeks ago. Um, and so they do have the, the site here off of a hundred ninety-second that they're interested in, which is about a hundred and twenty acres.
Oh, I got a question for you real quick.
Yes, sir.
Do you do cold calls? Many cold companies? I mean, do you participate in cold calling?
Um, quite honestly, we don't have to do that anymore. That's kind of an old practice for economic development. We build relationships with our broker communities, our, you know, um, commercial bankers and site selection consultants all over the world, um, specifically mostly in the United States. But, so we just have a lot of contacts and, but we do not do, I don't know, any economic development firm that does cold calling anymore.
Okay. You mentioned logistics. You mentioned I T. Uh, how about, uh, businesses that are looking to, to relocate their, um, uh, let me rephrase the, their headquarters in Council Bluffs, Potawatomi County? Are there any of those possibilities that you can see?
Um, we don't have any in our pipeline right now. No.
Cause I'm always looking at Ankeny as, as, as a, as a community that I, I, I think we ought to try to find a way to emulate.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Tony's Spices. Uh, I think Casey's General Stores has their corporate headquarters in Ankeny these days. And that really generates a lot of.
Well, and I mean, if you look at even like Des Moines and, and some of those things with headquarters, I mean, ours would make most sense on the Rivers Edge down there. I mean, that's where headquartered facilities generally like to be in that area. And I mean, you know.
Has there, has there ever been a, um, headquarters type of, uh, possibility for, for council?
I mean, we have companies that are headquartered here that are homegrown, homegrown companies, but I know your Conagra story. I know I've heard you tell that story a couple of times. Um.
And, and the state, actually, the state economic development, uh, team is working on getting Conagra back here somewhere. Why not Council Bluffs?
I mean, we have them. We have, we have Conagra here, obviously, a big land production facility. So.
Yeah, but, you know, corporate.
And even when they relocated their corporate to Chicago, there were still twelve to fifteen hundred employees on that campus. So it's not like they picked everybody up and, you know, just moved them. So there was still the presence, and now you see that's completely renovated. But yeah, and I mean, we don't do that type of recruitment, like I said, cold calling, but I mean, if the opportunity presents itself, and I have worked with the state on a couple of projects like that. Iowa did not win in those projects. They went elsewhere. But I mean, it's not out of the, you never know. You never ever know. So.
Paula?
Yes, sir.
We, you talk about a lot of these electronic, uh, I T type stuff.
Technology, yeah.
Technology. They take a lot of power.
They do.
Is that eating us up?
Uh, it's, it's challenging. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. It's challenging. So there's a lot of power studies going on, um, in and around Potawatomi County, specifically Council Bluffs right now. Mid-Am is a great partner to work with. Um, you know, you've probably followed or seen on the news that Omaha brought their experiencing, you know, a lot of issues with their, uh, availability of power. So we're not quite there yet, but you're right. If you would have told me five years ago that we would be talking about, you know, two to three hundred megawatt users, I would have laughed at you, cause our normal projects were five at tops, and now it's the two to three hundred megawatts of power. So I don't know if we'll be able to accommodate every, all these projects that I just talked about. I have no idea. I mean, power is the number one thing that's needed for these projects. So if we can accommodate them, great. Um, if we can't, we can't. I wish there was a different story, but that's, I mean, Mid-Am can only do what they can do.
Yep.
I understand.
Any other questions? I knew that. Yes, sir.
Oh, that manufacturing plant you talked about on a hundred ninety-second, what kind of traffic comes with that?
Uh, we have not gotten truck counts yet, and they also will utilize rail. So that's where they'll bring in their raw materials and all of those things, probably more so than trucking. But there will be truck traffic. We just don't have the couches or, cause that opens up a whole nother conversation about that area, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
That, that intersection there is, is backed up the way it is.
Yeah. Um, matter of fact, it was kind of, um, funny because the day that the company was in town, we obviously went to the site and we exited off of the Bellevue exit, and we went to make a left-hand turn, and there had been a train. And so traffic was completely backed up, and all of us had to sit there for like seven minutes to turn left onto a hundred ninety-sixth Street, cause the traffic was so backed up. And it was shift change for Google, too. So there was like a bunch of things that kind of added on to it right at that time, but they thought, they laughed about it. They didn't think it was a big deal. But I had never been stuck there like that for that long, waiting to turn, make a left-hand turn.
Part of the infrastructure discussion needs to be, in my opinion.
Part of the infrastructure discussion needs to be, in my opinion, um, paving that road all the way to.
It's already on my list, Tim. Already on the list. It doesn't make sense not to if we're gonna look at the whole area.
Run all of it, call the truck traffic, go south.
Try.
Try.
Yeah.
We'll put a gate up there.
Matter either in the.
I mean.
Where's John?
Well, you know, when the industrial, when the industrial park subdivision went in down there, and we originally had discussions with Jason, the developer. I mean, when we did the rice grant application, it was, we were thinking maximum fifty jobs. Potentially, we're gonna get created in that industrial park down there. And when you go down there, if you haven't had an opportunity to tour, I mean, Jason, I think, has done a great job with that industrial subdivision. But there's, there's individual sites with fifty to sixty employees working out there. That's how in need of industrial sites like that we are in the county. And we had those initial discussions back then about Hundred Ninety-second Street needed to go all the way down to the end. And we're continuing to see, I mean, Paula, just with her conversation, tell you, I mean, there's increased interest in that area. Uh, people, uh, the businesses want to be located because they have that interstate view and the potential to be seen from the interstate corridor there. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be a highly developed area. Um, I mean, we'll, which will eventually be City of Council Bluff's piece in there. But I think it's, it's a great opportunity for us in partnership with the city to have that happen.
I think almost every parcel of land down there where there's a willing seller is, has something going on it right now in the Southlands area, or it's already owned by another industrial, industrial user. So you can imagine, and this larger project that I talked about, that is gonna be the linchpin to really hopefully make all of those improvements.
Well, is that, is there a discussion, I don't know if you have it in the Mills County, but is there still the beef plant, the, the discussion going on?
Um, Supervisor Bell, I have not heard one single thing about that, and neither has he. So we are, we work very.
Never, or?
No, 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 no. I know exactly what you're talking about, but they are non, they don't communicate. And so the last.
They own the property.
They own the property, but the last I knew is that they were going back to the governor to make another pitch for funding. That was the last I knew, and they don't, the company themselves don't even communicate with the Mills County.
Well, is that right?
professional, which is sad in itself, so. Yeah. Yeah, that, that would be a lot of trucks.
You don't lock, lock those cows in there, are they gonna?
No. So I, I don't know. I wish I had a better answer for you on that.
No, no, I, you know, there's a lot of stuff interest that exits now.
Yeah.
What, what company is that that's, that's looking at that packing plant, putting, putting up a packing plant?
Uh, Cattleman's Heritage.
Cattleman's Heritage? Where are they located?
They're not, well, the majority of the folks that are working on the project are out of the Des Moines-Ankeny area, but they don't have like an official, like headquarters or anything. They're just, they're a startup for the most part.
They're headquarters in Council Bluff.
Yeah.
Well, they would be, I mean, because it would be their only facility, so.
Packing plants need cold storage, so that kind of feeds, feeds.
Right. I would assume they would have an abundance of their own on site, but I don't know that for sure. Um, and then the only other thing I was going to mention to you is that we are, uh, pursuing our five oh one C three designation. We're currently a five oh one C six. Um, we do get a lot of, um, grant dollars, but we have a pass through. Um, sometimes the county has helped us with that, but typically, it's the Council Plus Chamber or the Omaha Chamber that we've utilized. And so we're gonna cut out that middleman, and we're gonna do our own C three designation. So that should be completed by the end of this year, so you know. And I, that, I'm looking forward, that's gonna help us a lot with our entrepreneurial initiatives. Okay, and then, um, with Shalimar stuff, I'm not gonna read everything that she sent me, but I do wanna say that, you know, I was glad that Susan, uh, Supervisor Miller brought this up, because Shalimar has spent a lot of time, um, since the tornado, uh, in a lot of different capacities, and I'll forward this to Supervisor Miller, so she has this kind of timeline. But a lot of things has, have transpired, and, um, they've held a, a day, I think, a day and a half where they were in Minden and actually invited the businesses that were affected by the tornado to come in, uh, with the Small Business Development Center, so they could talk about what it looks like for them regarding rebuilding their business. And so I think she said they visited with seventeen companies that day, um, which I thought was great, and assistance in all different kind of forms and fashion. But one of the coolest things is that she engaged Iowa Economic Development Authority from the beginning, who, I mean, I know Director Durham follows, but she probably had no idea the true extent, because she hadn't been there yet. Um, and so tomorrow afternoon, she is sending one of her, um, one of her managers down, and so we're gonna meet with that person and tour Minden. So he can report back directly to Director Durham about the, the assessment of his, the damage, basically, and what it's gonna potentially take as far as the state goes, maybe grants for the small businesses to, to rebuild. So Susan, do you have anything else you wanna add to that?
Well, I just wanna say Shalimar's also been working with, uh, Brenda Mainwaring at Iowa West and with myself as far as we were looking at the city of Minden and thinking, what do they really need? And Shalimar attended their city council meeting when they discussed the opportunity to have a funded city planner.
Correct.
So, um, Brenda sent a message yesterday that United Way had agreed to fund, uh, part of that for five thousand dollars. Um, McClure is familiar with the Minden facility or the people in Minden, and they're, we're, we're gonna sit down later this week and talk to Minden to decide what steps do they want and how we can help with that, with the funding provided.
Yeah, that's tomorrow afternoon. Um.
Wednesday, yes.
Yeah, tomorrow afternoon. And so, you know, just the fact that a lot of individuals are collaborating, but, you know, for the city of Minden to actually have somebody on staff that they choose, because it's gonna be their decision, who they choose, if they're open to that, I think would be really good for them. It'll help them a lot.
Yeah.
Maybe take some of the weight off their shoulders.
It, it's just to provide some of that funding, expertise, grant writing, connections.
Correct.
To help them in their recovery process.
Yep. Um, and then Shalimar does have several just regular projects that she's working, um, but what I'm gonna ask us, her and I will come back probably in mid-June and give, uh, an update on, obviously, what she's been working on with all of these initiatives in Rock Park County, but more so in-depth about her project stuff. But I will forward this to Supervisor Miller, so she has it. Any, any other questions I can answer for you?
Well, if you're gonna shoot it to her, shoot it to all of us.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Good information to share.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paula.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know how much five thousand, get some for a city's land, but hopefully they get something. You know, some more money to give.
Well, I think United Way was just giving, giving the five, but I think the Iowa West Foundation was really funding it, but United Way has agreed to, and I don't know at what extent. I mean, I wouldn't speak on behalf of them, but.
It's a temporary deal, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think I heard like twenty-four months kind of thrown out there, so, I mean, you're, I mean, you're gonna need more than five thousand, obviously, for that.
Well, I mean, just recovery is from disasters we've had before, take years, it's not.
Right, it's not overnight. It's, it's extended period of time, so. So activity is good, and, I mean, I couldn't be more pleased with the way things were going. Um, I do wish, wish Mother Nature would cooperate, I'm sure, as well as all of you do, um, with us a little bit more. But, you know, like Doug said, it's just kind of an unusual spring that we've had, and.
We got a new hotel we want to.
What is that, Scott?
What's that?
There's a new hotel.
Yes, yeah, there actually, what, more than one, right?
Good, awesome.
Lots of things happening here.
Those are not, um, projects that we have worked on, so, I mean, I know what you're talking about, but.
They're still good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right now, we have twenty, almost twenty-seven hundred hotel rooms in Council Bluff, so that could easily
Oh.
pushes us up closer to three thousand. Yeah.
Well, I'm interested, what do hotels are we looking at?
Uh, the one is an extended stay. Is that correct, Scott? Yeah.
Extended stay?
I've heard home two suites.
That's what I've heard, too.
One company that I think would be good to come in is Drew, Drewry, 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 okay. They're, they're quite a, quite impressive.
Yeah, it's a, a property that we don't have right now.
Yeah, very true.
I think they're out of St. Louis.
Yeah, maybe. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come in.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Lobsters in my.
Oh, yeah.
They're already closed.
They're already closed.
They're closed. They were closed last week. I think they shut them down the day they announced.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Yeah, the auction already happened, what contents are sold.
Really?
Yeah, Council Bluff's one auction already happened, contents are.
They said it was the biggest sale of, uh,
I thought they.
It shouldn't be quite that.
But it's gonna potentially.
There are, because I don't have any doubt that that facility, it'll be snapped up. We'll get something else there. That's a really prime, you know? We'll get something there.
High possibility, high traffic.
You know, the lobsters, will it run out of lobster?
shrimp.
The bottomless shrimp.
Unless, yeah.
True.
Or it's gone. You made a lot of money there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, stay safe.
Thank you, Paula.
All right, next, Matt Wyatt, Director of Planning and Development and Pam Calstrup Zoning and Land Use Coordinator, discussion and our decision on second consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh three, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Potawatomi County, Iowa, by changing the district designation of approximately two point nine nine two two acres from a Class A three riverfront and ag production to Class C two general commercial district. And we had the first reading on this ordinance last week.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three. I'll second.
Quick reminder on this one, this is that site off of Mormon Bridge Road coming out of Crescent. That's farmland all the way around, around three sides of it, industrial on the other side of it, so it's right, it sits right on that main road. It'd be a good little commercial site for the.
I drove by it last week, and I was like, oh, well, there's a turn, that's the turnaround they were talking about.
Everybody that misses their turn, they turn around right in that driveway. Too busy texting to watch the signs.
Give a motion by Shane, a second by Jorgensen. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
And Bell.
Aye.
I really have to say approximately two point nine nine two two acres.
Yeah.
Approximately.
I don't argue with them.
Get in trouble if you argue with them.
All right. Next, Matt Wyatt, Director of Planning and Development and Pam Calstrup Zoning and Land Use Coordinator, discussion and our decision to approve second consideration and to waive the third consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh four entitled, an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the twenty twenty-four RMP housing urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three dot one nine code of Iowa. And this is the one we had a public hearing on last week. We had, um, public speak in favor of the project. We had no public speak against the project.
This is a twelve lot subdivision off of McPherson, right next to the Cloverdale subdivision, just to the east of there. Uh, lot, one lot has the old farmstead on it, so it's already constructed out, so there'll be eleven lots there that are for sale. Um, and, you know, just by the area, I imagine you'll see the valuations of probably five hundred thousand dollars and up on those homes. So they'll be out there, they will be septic and well homes, so.
The one lot with the old farmhouse is already part of the base value, though, right?
Right.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
Second.
We have a motion by Shane, a second by Bell, to approve the second consideration and to waive the third consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh four.
Uh, there's still work on agreement, right? Correct. That's coming back to us, right?
Agreement does come back to you.
Okay, yep.
Is that gonna be next week? I saw twenty-eight.
May twenty-eighth.
It's coming next week, then.
That's next year.
Okay.
Melvin, will you please call the roll?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman. Shay.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
You got me down as an eye on that one.
Yeah, I did. I thought I saw your head nod.
Yeah, Scott.
I just mixed it up.
Yeah.
I mixed you up.
You're awesome.
I know. Yeah, I know.
All right, next, Jason Swack, Director of Buildings and Grounds, discussion and our decision to approve application for use of Potawatomi County grounds for use of county property for Jimmy's Hot Dogs. Jason?
Hey. Um, I ran into Jim, and I asked if he would like to come to the courthouse. It's also hot dogs. Said he'd love to. He'd like to come every Tuesday. Did that be fine?
We're really set up.
Uh, directly outside the east course, on this side of the ballers.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve that.
What, what are we gonna? Okay, I'll wait for a second, then we'll.
Yeah.
Well, I'll go ahead and set up for discussion.
What are we gonna do when Timmy's Hot Dogs wants to come?
We'll give him an opportunity.
He can come on Tuesdays, Wednesdays.
What, Scotty's Hot Dogs?
Are, are we, um, uh, and I understand the questions. How will we wanna handle that? But I, I think we should see how this goes flow-wise and everything before we say a cart belage, or let you go forever.
Sure.
You know.
Jason, is this a food truck, or what is this?
It's a hot dog cart.
He sets up a Bayless Park for Tuesdays.
Haven't seen him.
I have not seen him.
Two or three years now, he sets up a Bayless Park.
Different events.
It's not the same one, because we had the hot dog lady. He bought it from her.
Oh, he did, okay.
Yeah.
But we pick her out.
Is that for thirty days, Scott, or sixty days, or what do you wanna do?
That's. Yeah, sixty days would be eight times. You know, I mean, I think we need to evaluate it, and we, we may wanna shuffle them around, or it may not be flow-wise be
Sure.
be good or whatever.
So where is he gonna set up at? It's not clear to me.
On the west side of the ballards, right in front of the front entrance there of the courthouse.
But not in the fire lane?
Not in the fire lane, no.
Do we have any, any space? Well, we'll have a different layout once the building's gone over there, and so. I just think we gotta be cognizant of what it does to the workflow.
What's the hours gonna be?
I, I think he said he'd come set up around ten, he'd go to two, or something like that. I'm not exactly sure on the hours, but it'd be lunchtime hours.
Jason, would it be better to say a food cart or something like that, or rather than just Jimmy's Dogs? Would that be a better plan, and then we could have the flexibility to
Sure.
swap it around?
Whatever the word means. I've just had a lot of different employees.
I'm just throwing that out.
Come and ask me about maybe getting a thinner for coffee, or, you know, something like that for lunch, or. So we just happened to, I happened to run by, uh, Jim and talk to him about it. He sounded pretty excited.
Maybe, maybe it's probably weather related, weather related.
He's excited.
He probably wouldn't wanna be out there today.
Probably not a good day today.
He might be. He's got a big umbrella.
For, for the application that was in our packet, you've got a section on there for county use only, and, um, Buildings and Grounds and the Sheriff and Courthouse Security have the option to approve or deny, or ha- have you talked with the Sheriff?
No, I haven't.
Courthouse Security?
No, I'd like to, like, I thought I'd get the board approval first and I could, sure.
Will you bring that back to us one way or the other? I like the idea. I really do. And if we gotta swap it around with some different vendors, I feel that'd be good if the if the deputies.
Well, we gotta talk about the next one. Another one on the agenda.
Yes, I know. I know. Do we uh?
I don't know. I I. Sixty days, eight times, come back and give us an update. And if it's not, there's an issue before that. And after that, we'll.
I would amend my motion for a sixty day review.
Yeah, I I concur with that, but um. If something happens sooner, we'll have to make a decision.
Well, you could just put it at, you know, uh discretion of the board where, you know.
Well, we're gonna check it out after a week if you can. Tell us. He, I mean, he's gonna be the one that finds out. We're, the court's not gonna be sitting down there.
No, but you'll hear a complaint or.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If the station comes up, you, you know, you can shut it down.
Maybe a better spot for him than there, but I don't know what it would, I don't know what it would be.
He doesn't require any utilities or anything. Everything is just kind of self-contained.
Well, he sets up on the hundred block and.
We, are we talking more of traffic flow through there for safety? People walking back and forth?
Yeah, that's what I would.
Yeah, I work with Jason on on, you know, the flow and making sure that if for is if cars coming through there.
No, I.
Yeah, I can work. I guess you know, I say the aspect of it all. I just set that in all major. Jimmy's Hot Dogs is well known. I mean, I've I've never had one, so.
I see him around a lot.
Okay. So are you are you looking at cars to be parking and then go to this this hot dog stand?
Well, they'll park in our parking lot.
In our parking lot.
And then walk up to it. The courthouse patrons will. I, you know, as far as attracting other people just for the hot dogs. I don't know how.
Hard to say. Hard to say.
So if we put a sixty day stipulation on this, if we have somebody else who wants to do something similar on another day, we're gonna have to give them a sixty day requirement as well.
Yeah, that'd be fair. That'd be fair. I mean, if it's gonna work, we're gonna know if it's gonna work or not. I would think after a little while. I mean, the city don't have him setting up in front of their uh city hall. They have him setting up in Bayless Park.
Yeah, that's a, probably it makes more sense to have him.
Well, he sets up over there unless you quit. I mean.
I haven't seen him in Bayless.
I haven't either.
For last year.
I don't think this, I haven't seen him at all this year.
He's gotta get a a permit from the city to set up.
Right now, he's got a, he's got permits and all that. Uh but he's he's under contract with Menards over in Omaha. He's gotta be there Wednesday through Saturday.
Oh, so he's in, he's over in Menards?
Yeah.
Wow.
Which one?
I think seventy second. Is there one on seventy second?
Seventy second.
Yep, yep. Come by Rolston.
Oh, yeah, they're off of. It's that center street.
No, South Hell. Hell, yeah, Hell Street. Hell Street, that's us. Yeah.
So. We'll see. Hot dogs on, what'd you say, Tuesdays?
Tuesdays. The handle is on trash, Jason.
I'm sorry?
The handle is on trash.
He does.
Uh I, he said he's full, fully self-contained, so I would assume that would cover trash as well.
We don't need approval from the sheriff, do we?
Well, as far as the, from the security aspect, we probably need to seek approval from the sheriff because they are in charge of security at the courthouse. If there was any kind of a security risk associated with that. We would wanna cover our butts, you know.
Some of the people are gonna probably get their thing, go sit on our steps. And then some will go, uh there might, could be a couple benches out there and stuff. There are over by the old jail. Yeah.
He just provides the stand, right? He doesn't provide any seating or any.
No.
Outside tables of any kind.
No.
Pretty hard to drink and hold a chip and eat a hot dog all the time.
Done. How he does.
Okay. We're doing for sixty days. I don't care. We'll take a look at it. I mean, I don't wanna spend two hours talking about hot dog stand. If it doesn't work, you know, it doesn't work.
Sorry.
I mean.
All right, so we have a motion by Shay, a second by Bell to approve the application for use of the Potawatomi County grounds for Jimmy's Hot Dogs. To be out front of the courthouse on Tuesdays with a sixty day review. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. All right, the next one is Jason Slack, Director of Buildings and Grounds, discussion and or decision to approve application for use of Potawatomi County grounds for use of county property for Jay's Coffee and Donuts.
Well, this is a coffee truck. And they have coffee, they have donuts, and they have uh other drinks. So and I did attach to many of them words.
Is this more like a a big, big van than a truck?
Yeah.
It's actually a trailer, I think.
Well, it's a trailer. Does it need power then?
No, they're they're self-sufficient.
The Potawatomi County Courthouse standby for the following broadcast. All patrons of the Potawatomi County Courthouse, be advised, the National Weather Service of Omaha has issued a tornado watch in effect until five P M. Once again, the National Weather Service has issued a tornado watch until five P M.
So.
In the broadcast at eleven.
So where's his setup being?
Same same place. That that front entrance from the from the fire lane to the ballards is a pretty wide area. If we keep them over closer to the mailbox and the the election drop box. In that area, I I think that they would be out of the way.
Now, are they like setting up at whatever seven in the morning till eleven or are they gonna run?
We haven't discussed hours with them yet.
Okay.
So but I mean, if I if I had a coffee trailer, I'd wanna set up in the morning. It'd be here when people are walking in.
Right.
Seven thirty to ten.
Oh, okay.
So you. You 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 want, now you wanna do Mondays?
Yeah.
Were they out? Are they from here?
Yes. They're located right by Lincoln's Pub uh up at Underfly there.
They're in the chamber? Oh, they're in the chamber?
Yep.
Okay.
Just Mondays, is it?
Just Mondays. Yes, Monday.
Is that what they call themselves, Jay's Coffee?
I'm making a motion to approve this with the sixty day. Trial period and for the approval of the court's security. I'll second.
But uh do we have plenty of mops and mop buckets?
Yes.
I mean.
We we get spills almost every day around here. People are carrying in coffee every day.
The uh the truck has a generator on it. How loud is that?
I don't know.
They set up at the farmer's market a lot. It's not terribly loud. They're there almost every week.
The farmer are are this one?
Over Bayless Park.
Well, the only thing uh on Mon- Mondays is that's where most of the holidays bounce off of, so.
Yeah.
Missed some, missed some days, but. Get a shot, I guess.
What uh? Where where's this this vehicle gonna park, Jason?
Same same area. Just less of those ballers.
I I just have a real concern with the fire lane.
Fire lane will remain open. Uh you'll still be able to drive completely around the building. There'll still be room for people to be dropped off and picked up and.
The insurance declaration that's included in our packet. It was provided, but it doesn't look like it says condition upon the payment of the premium. Would you just. Confirm that the insurance has been paid for, please?
Sure.
You're doing insurances, right?
Right. They uh I work with Jason all the time on this, a different insurance, so we get them and we we track them.
Good.
That was one of the things I talked to Jason about too as well. They come make sure they have basically different insurance and I get a copy.
Nothing in that contract about pre-coffee donuts for supervisors, is there?
We're gonna vent your motion.
Susan, do you do you like this one? I I think this is gonna be an issue.
I I.
I don't like the truck being there. Uh there's visibility issues if somebody's gonna cross the parking lot to get to the courthouse. It's a lot larger than a hot dog stand. You know, it's, I'm not sure you want to. People piling in the courthouse with the, I don't know. I I don't.
You wanna try it maybe one, one time, put a shorter uh time frame on it.
Well, that's that's what I'm looking at. Give it a try. See, see, see how it goes. See what the problems that we do have and then go from there.
Sixty days is only eight Mondays.
The people in the courthouse really would like this.
Well, next Monday, they won't be able to come because it's Memorial Day and then there'll probably be one around Fourth of July too, so.
Every department has a coffee machine. Tim, I get my coffee from the scooters. If they're cheaper than scooters and just as good.
I I've heard several comments about setting up a coffee bar inside courthouse lobby.
We haven't had any luck trying to locate somebody that would be, you know, willing to do that yet.
Yes.
If if anybody gets lead on it, we'll uh we'll take a reference, so.
But but I would rather have them out in the parking lot than in the lobby. That's my point. But I I think if they parked on the street, it would be just as visible and just as easily accessible.
It's big enough for a food court.
It's a fire lane.
You know.
Oh, Jeff, you're gonna open up a can of worms here.
What's the county's cut? We get a cut?
We don't get a cut. He gets from a uh small local business.
But if you.
For the employees.
If you wanna try it for a while, I guess I'll go with that. I think between Jason, myself and court security, we can make sure that, you know, the fire lane, all that kinda safety stuff is is taken care of. And if it is, I think we can trust, address it. And just go out and monitor it quite a bit and say, hey. Make adjustments as needed.
I I just, you know, this one.
In this sixty days before it comes back to the board.
This one here, I, you know, I I'll be curious how long, I mean, they're gonna decide how long they wanna stay too. It's not a problem, you know, because they're, they're working. Uh I just can't imagine much after nine o'clock or nine thirty. It's. It's done as far as the employee side of the thing.
Let's give it a try and see what happens.
Busy around tax time and stuff. People blowing up the court probably aren't feeling like eating coffee and donuts. But they have to go up there for what they're going for.
These coffee shops around town and across our country just surprise me to death. Look at Starbucks. Look at scooters. I, there's constantly a line in those places and I just, I scratch my head. Coffee all day, all night. It don't matter. They're busy.
So it's interesting that both these come in at the same time, but it is what it is.
One's a Monday, one's a Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll see.
All for a vote.
All right, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve the application for use of Potawatomi County grounds for Jay's Coffee and Donuts to be out in front of the courthouse on Mondays. With a sixty day trial period and with approval of court security. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Jason.
They got good donuts.
I know.
Okay, David Baer, Chief Information Officer, Information Technology, discussion and our decision regarding information technology staff on call pay.
Thanks.
Somebody else.
All right, David.
Good morning. Uh so I'm coming to you to talk about on-call pay. Currently, my staff gets thirty dollars per night when they're on-call. The reason we have on-call is because we service the sheriff out of one jail and anyone else certainly who would call in, but primarily it's those agencies or those divisions and departments. And obviously, we have to have after-hours support because uh people are working. And so we have to be able to help them with their computers or outages or anything like that. We get about fifteen calls a month uh after hours. So that's evenings and weekends. So roughly every other day, sometimes we don't have anything for a whole week and the next week we'll have three or four. But on average, it's about fifteen uh calls a month. Um on-call means that uh the person who's assigned to on-call, they'll have their phone nearby. They'll have their laptop, obviously. And they're not going out and doing anything. They're staying by there, staying at home, staying available for if and when a call does come in.
David, did you say that's in your budget?
Yeah, it was, it was added to my budget, which was approved.
Starting July first?
Starting July first, yeah.
And that's what you're asking for?
So this is just the making it official that they're paying.
Or the July first start date.
Correct, correct. As I say, I thought we did this already.
The increase is going from thirty dollars to.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars.
So that's ten dollars extra, which ten times three hundred and sixty-five days is three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. That's the way it works. So the money's approved, but I wanna make it official so that I can go to the payroll department uh division and say.
I'll make a motion to approve that for you.
I'll second that. What's the hours, David, there on-call?
From four thirty P M to seven thirty the next morning. On weekend or on evenings and then weekends, a slow weekend.
So if they're on a call for three hours, they get forty bucks?
Forty bucks a night, correct. Yep. It's, if there's no call or twelve calls, it's the same number.
Not paying them overtime.
So I have some staff that are salaried and some staff that are hourly. It depends on who's on-call. So if it's an hourly person, they they do have the freedom to choose comp time, overtime, or flex. Depends on what they wanna do.
Plus forty bucks.
Plus forty bucks. So my my help desk staff, which are three, are the hourly people. My network administrator team and Anthony McCartney are, who are also on-call. Uh they are salaried and they wouldn't have overtime.
Is the whole staff uh in the rotation of on-call then?
Everyone uh but myself, because I can't help anybody technically. And uh Kelly, our front desk person. And Devin, our new help desk person, is not on the rotation yet, but he will be. And so the way the rotation works is we have a primary on-call person and a secondary on-call person. The primary. Obviously should take the call, but sometimes, you know, who knows here. Not available. Uh it would roll to the second person and they answer it. The second person doesn't get the pay, but that's the way. We just have to have the backup just in case. We also have a network person available in case the help desk person needs to elevate the the request. And on-call begins Friday at four thirty and then goes, your rotation starts at four thirty on Friday and goes all the way till four thirty the next Friday.
Are you keeping track of the time, David, or is it reported to you? Or how are you handling that?
We use uh E S S or Employee Self-Service and the employees are on-call. They just put a one for the days. They choose on-call and they put a one for the days that they were working.
No, I'm I'm talking about uh if they get calls.
Oh, how many call? We have the, we have our phone system that tells uh how many on-call calls we got and how long those calls were. And then if it's less than fifteen minutes, they don't put a ticket in. If it's over fifteen minutes, then we do ask that they put the ticket in so we can track what the work was.
So they'll get an hour minimum too, right?
Yes.
Over fifteen minutes, it's an hour minimum probably.
Yep.
Do we have a policy on that, David?
I have an on-call policy. Yep.
With, that explains this.
Yeah, I could, I could forward that to you.
Would you please? That'd be awesome. Thanks, David.
Yep.
David, could you send it to the board, please?
So we have a motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve staff on-call pay for information technology employees of forty dollars per night. Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. David?
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have Heather Schaefer, Human Resources, and Brittany Whitten-Wittington from Locked In Companies. Um, presentation of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual wellness report and discussion and/or decision to approve Lockton Consulting Agreement for June one, twenty twenty-four through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Hi, Brittany.
Well, um, I will not, I'm not gonna go through each slide and read every slide to you. I'm just going to hit each slide and give you a brief overview, hit any highlights. Um, we did have a little bit of an increase for the program year last year. Um, we went up from two hundred and four the previous year to two hundred and nineteen total participants. And, um, based on what everyone did and what they completed, we are above the benchmark that we would expect members to be at. We had about seventy percent of the partici-, of the population participate in the program based on the eligible number that Heather had provided to me. And then we had seventy-nine percent of those who did participate met the requirements, meaning that they met four of six wellness benchmarks and they are not as, um, not as at risk for metabolic syndrome is what that loosely translates to. And then of those members who did need to do those quarterly health coaching calls, we had seventy-six percent of them that completed that. So it is well above the benchmarks and those benchmarks are, um, seventy-two percent for meeting three or the four of six. And, um, you guys were at seventy-nine, so you're quite a bit ahead there. And then, um, for completing the health coaching, the benchmark is sixty-three percent and you were at seventy-six percent. So you got, your participation is great and that has never been the problem. I think what we have been seeing over the last couple of years is more of a stagnation and where we're, where the members are progressing or, um, improving their biometrics. Part of that is because we've had the same program design for so long and in order to really push people to make more changes or, um, not want to have to do any of the extra requirements for not meeting those biometrics, there really has to be a little bit more to the program. And I have talked with Heather and Jana about that and we've come up with some ideas. Um, we just need to figure out how to get those into the program. Next slide.
Heather, can I ask one question?
Yes.
When it says that we had, uh, two hundred and nineteen participants up from two oh four?
Yes.
Does that, um, does that two nineteen include the, uh, employees that required coaching that didn't follow through with their coaching?
Yes, that, so the two hundred and nineteen is anybody that completed the first part, which is completing the health risk assessment online and then submitting their biometric results. So that's the core piece of what they have to do in order for us to even determine if they meet the four of six. But two hundred and nineteen members did both of those first, that first set of requirements, the HRA and the biometric screening.
And we lost eleven through the coaching process.
Yes, yes. And those, um, unfortunately, there's some people that they submit the paperwork just to see if they meet the four of six and then once they find out that they have to do coaching, they don't wanna take that extra step, um, and have those phone calls with the nurse. And so then they lose out on continuing to earn the incentive.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And then this slide is looking at clinical measures. Um, these are those measures that are based on the biometric screening, so these are not, um, self-reported metrics that the member is putting in. This is what's on their form from their doctor. If you see pink, then it means that they had an improvement or that Pot County, I apologize, Pot County overall had an improvement in that category. So you can see there's quite a few, um, places where you, where they did improve. And a lot of those are, um, in the cholesterol area, which is great. Um, that can translate to many different things. Um, it could be that people are working out more, it could be that people are eating healthier. It could also be that they're just going to their doctor and taking the medications that they're supposed to to manage that condition. However, managing that condition is one of the first steps. So as long as they're doing that, then that is going to help prevent catastrophic events that could happen because they are not managing it. If those cholesterol numbers get out of control, can lead to heart attacks, stroke, things like that. Whereas as long as they're taking that medication and managing that condition, then that progression is less likely to happen. This slide is looking at actual self-reported information, so this depends on somebody telling the truth. Um, same concept here, pink is where they have improved. There's only a couple areas. Um, there is one that was, I think, a zero on one of them or very close and you can't see the pink. But, um, there are a few areas, one of the areas that I like to see the improvement here was the last one, the low physical activity. Hopefully that means that people are getting out and being a little bit more active, even if it is just taking nightly walks or, um, you know, something as basic as that. It doesn't necessarily mean that somebody needs to go to the gym five days a week or anything, but at least getting up and not sitting at a desk like a lot of us do on a daily basis or sitting at home on your couch watching TV. Uh, we all do it, but as long as we're getting some kind of physical activity in there, it can make a big difference. These numbers here are looking at the overall population, so it's not looking at the same members and comparing those same members year over year. So this one is a little bit more, um, apples to oranges instead of apples to apples. There is some, it's, it's really even across the board here in every year, which is kind of where I was saying. Um, it's starting to stagnate a little bit. There isn't as much improvement happening because people are reaching, reaching their incentive without having to do too much, which is why we've discussed adding some additional parts to the program or additional hoops that, um, participants who are screening at risk need to go through in order to continue earning that incentive. This one is more of your apples to apples. Um, the one on the left, it says same participants. So this is looking at participants who participated in both twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, and, um, comparing their biometrics for those two years. The one on the right includes those who did coaching. They did the health coaching in twenty twenty-two and also participated in twenty twenty-three. This is where you're gonna see most of your improvement. And this group, um, they improved in their BMI, their systolic blood pressure, their LDL, which is your bad cholesterol, and their triglycerides. They also increased, which is an improvement, their HDL cholesterol, which is their good cholesterol, the higher number for that, the better. Um, so that, that population that is actually working with the nurse and doing their health coaching calls is seeing more of an improvement, obviously, than those who do not have to. Um, those who don't have to do the calls are just staying where they, where they are, whether it's all good or all bad, they're kind of just riding that line and not really improving anywhere. Um, there are some different options for that as well. Obviously, we don't, if they're not talking to us, we don't have as much of an influence on them. But there are different program designs where we could have, um, you know, those members working with the nurse or we can change that, um, benchmark number. So right now it's four of six. We could change that to three of six. There's other options of pulling out tobacco from the entire thing and having a separate tobacco piece. So then you're looking at three of five instead of out of six and the tobacco is separate. So there's lots of different options that we have for, um, kind of revamping the program and hopefully catching some additional members who could have their risk lowered by working with the nurse and setting goals.
Do we have many smokers?
Um, I think off the top of my head, it was nine this past year, so not a huge amount. It is pretty low, um, and we'll, there's a couple slides at the end.
Nine of the group that we're talking.
Yes, yeah, of the two hundred and nineteen, and that number is self-reported.
Right.
So we're assuming that everyone was truthful and.
That, that's including vaping and chewing tobacco too, right?
It should, as, as long as they're answering it correctly, yes. Yes, uh, you're exactly right. Um, unfortunately, we know that not everybody tells the truth on those. Um, there are some companies that we have that have taken a more stricter look or approach to it and require cotinine testing, which is to see if they are a tobacco user. So instead of taking their word for it and they attest, it's a result that they get from their screening. However, there are some little nuances to that, especially since we're not your insurance provider or broker. We're not sure exactly what that looks like, um, because the clients that we have that do that have it built into their insurance program so that it's covered. Because a cotinine test is not typically going to be covered by insurance. Um, so it usually requires some type of rider. This slide, it looks pretty much the same as last year. Like I said, um, the overall population, we're, it's staying pretty consistent over the last three years. Um, most of the population, you'll see in the blue, that's the study population for Pot County, that two hundred and nineteen members. And we are trending higher on the above-normal risk than what the national average is. And the idea would be that we'd wanna push that a little bit more to, um, the side so that we are not having as many people above normal or at a higher risk than the national average.
Brittany, that, where it says participants one, we have one perfect employee?
You have one perfect employee.
Who is it?
I, I can't tell you that.
Did you say it's not me?
Uh, it might be.
No, it's not.
It's really hard to reach that perfect. Um, that second category is where, you know, to be, to be in that optimal range is a lot more difficult than you would think. Most people aren't going to achieve that, obviously, which is why there's one out of two hundred and nineteen that reached that. Um, but there's a lot of companies that we do this for that have nobody, so you're in a better position than they are. Um, on the next slide, so this just goes through the actual health factors. This is BMI showing where you, you, your group is on average compared to the national average, which Pot County is a little bit higher on the BMI than the national average. And there has been, um, a little bit of a growth over the last couple of years for BMI and then it'll go down like a point one. But when we look at it over five years, or sorry, three years, when we get to that slide, there has been a little bit more of a drop than what I would have thought, which is great to see.
Who's helping today with hot dogs?
Right, yeah. Hot dogs and donuts, although it sounds good.
We should have had your presentation first.
You can walk by.
Right.
You can walk right on by.
Something sounds hard.
I know.
On this slide, we're looking at, uh, physical activity. The amount, the number of members who are getting higher moderate amounts of exercise has increased by one percent um, from twenty twenty-two, so it's pretty consistent as well. The hard part is getting people to understand what the difference between moderate exercise and vigorous exercise is. And what we typically say is moderate exercise is where you are getting your heart rate up, but you can still hold a conversation. If you can hold the conversation, you are not exercising vigorously. If you are vigorously exercising, you're running or working out or doing whatever you're doing and you cannot hold a conversation, then that is when it is vigorous. Um, and obviously you need twice as much if you do moderate exercise, but it is a little bit easier on your body. And then diet nutrition, this is an educational point as well. Um, there's twenty-seven percent of participants say they eat the correct, the recommended amounts of fruits and vegetables, so that's seventy-three percent that do not. However, educationally, people don't always understand what a serving is. They think, oh, I ate a banana, that's only one serving. It's probably two. You eat a big apple, it's probably two. Um, so just that piece of information where if they're talking to the nurse and engaging with the nurse or if, um, you know, we have a new platform that's available, Heather knows, it's called the LNA Health Hub. There's different, in, there's informational flyers on there and just teaching people that that serving size and the portions and all that information that you probably don't think about because you're just seeing one apple or one orange or one banana and you're thinking that's a serving. Blood pressure, um, staying pretty consistent, you'll see that we had fifteen percent of members who had elevated blood pressure. This was a one percent decrease from sixteen percent. And then we had a, um, four percent for high blood pressure in twenty twenty-two and that increased a little bit more for twenty twenty-three. So those members who are experiencing higher blood pressure, the nurse would be talking to them as long as they have to do that coaching and, you know, explaining to them if they didn't go to their doctor, have that addressed already, then they need to do that and giving them tips on how to control it, different foods. You know, if you have high blood pressure and you eat a lot of salt, it's not going to do well for you. So explaining some of those things to them, giving them different recipe recommendations, um, things like that. Luckily, most of your population, unless it's a new hire, they are going to their physician. Um, you do have the onsite screenings that some people do during the health fair. But as long as they're going to their doctor to get their, um, preventive exam, then the doctor would be addressing this at that time, or at least they should be. Tobacco use, um, like I said, we're down to nine this past year and hopefully that number will continue to drop. We are below, well, you guys are below the national average for, um, tobacco use as long as most of the people are telling the truth. Cause I think the national average is right around twen-, I don't have my glasses on, but twenty-six percent.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Thank you. Um, and so we are in a great place, but it would be great to get that number down to zero.
Boy, that's dropped over the last
Yes.
forty, fifty years. That a generation just smoked and smoked and smoked.
Well, I think that's why we don't have one hundred percent participation in the program.
It's probably very accurate, people, you know, if they, if they feel like they aren't going to meet the incentive without needing to do the reasonable alternative of the health coaching with the, with the nurses, then they just don't do it at all. Um, unfortunately, but hopefully we can continue to see at least small increases in the number of people participating. For lipids, which is that cholesterol, um, we did see a little bit of an increase in the number of members who had high triglycerides or low HDL. Um, that could very much be because we had more people participate. Um, but as I mentioned, for the coaching participants, they did see a decrease in this risk. So those who are working with the nurse are making changes that are needed. And then we had a little bit of a drop for the good cholesterol. Diabetes, we've got, um, the same risk here as we have in previous years. The, those who are already working on, you know, whatever they need to work on, whether they're already a diabetic or, um, have prediabetes, they've already set goals to work towards that or are working with their doctors. Um, there are about just under half of those who have a diabetes diagnosis did have an above-average, um, glucose or hemoglobin A1C result, which means that they might not be managing it as, it as well. And that is something that Heather, the nurse for Potawatomi County, would be addressing with them. Um, sometimes that's just they're ha-, they're having trouble with access to medications, especially with the rise in cost for those medications. So she can help them with finding, um, discounted prices, whether it's through GoodRx or something like that, where she can assist them in getting, you know, getting past any barriers that they might be experiencing. And then those who are prediabetic or were not previously diagnosed, um, those are the people that we really need to catch so that they can make the changes before it progresses to type-two diabetes.
Brittany, are the lipids and the diabetes, how much of that's, um, genetics?
It can be, a lot of it can be genetics. Um, uh, for diabetes, it's, it's genetic, but it can be controlled. If you know that you're at risk and you, um, you know, make sure that you're getting the exercise that you need or having a good, good diet, it can stop it from progressing to that. Um, but the more Um, but the more fatty foods or greasy foods or high carb foods that you eat, if you're already at risk for type-two diabetes, then it's going to be harder to stop it if you don't do it beforehand. For cholesterol, it's kind of the same thing. Genetics can play into it, but not quite as much smoking plays into your cholesterol. Um, if you're, if you smoke, then your HDL is, which is your good cholesterol, is going to be lower. Um, it's going to raise your triglycerides, which high triglycerides can lead to a stroke. Um, it's where it just builds up in your arteries. So there are things that while it is, it can be hereditary, it's the, what we do to our bodies in between that can really push it over. Stress and depression, um, as you can see on the right chart, the female population has a higher score for depression assessment. This means that the female population is more at risk for depression. So that pink that you see, which is around eighteen percent of the female population, answered their questions in a way that would put them at risk for depression. It's just the way that women tend to handle stress differently than men. They seem to hold on to things a little bit longer or let it affect them differently than men. And that's just how it normally is. Unfortunately, um, men also have a tendency to not tell the truth about their stress or acknowledge some of that stress, so it tends to be lower for that as well. And then the three and five-year comparison. So this first slide is looking at the overall five years that we've done this program, and that's looking at two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-three. What we did here was we looked at the number of participants that participated in each of those years. So this is not apples to apples, this is apples to oranges, because there's people that participated in twenty eighteen that are no longer here in twenty twenty-three, or people that are here in twenty twenty-three who did not work for Pot County yet in twenty eighteen. So you'll see that there's a lot of blue here, which means that it's just a small notable change. It wasn't enough that it's really positive or negative. Anywhere you see the green, which you'll see that for the good cholesterol and for the LDL in tobacco use, those are positive changes. The only place that there's been a negative change is in triglycerides. But both of the averages are still well under the, um, the goal. So, and under the national average. So we're not in a bad, a bad position, we're just kind of stuck. We need to make some changes to the program to push people to make more health goals and more changes to their lifestyles.
Are the hot dogs gonna be healthy?
They will be.
Well, that, that's good, and it's all in moderation. It's not that you can't have those things. If you go buy a hot dog, buy a hot dog and don't buy three, um, you know, just moderation. Everyone wants that stuff because it tastes good. I like hot dogs, so I have one every once in a while, and that's fine. Um, for this, we are looking at the same participants over five years. So you can see on the top left, or sorry, top right, that there's a green arrow going down, and that is the percent of participants who started off coaching in the first couple of years of this and then fell off and no longer had to coach. The opposite on the pink arrow, that is the percent of participants who did not coach or, and then had to or continued to have to coach. Fell off, went back on, something like that. They didn't consistently stay off the coaching list, basically. And this overall trend nets us at thirty-one percent positive change. So thirty-one percent of those that we're looking at fell off and no longer had to coach, never had to come back onto the coaching list. So they made those changes and kept with whatever they did to, uh, resolve that change. And then the chart, um, in the white with the blue lines, that just that shows you how many members had to coach for how many years. So there's mo- most of these are just coaching for one year, and then you'll see that the line goes down. We have six members that have had to coach all six of those years. So that's hopefully they'll eventually fall off, but some people, if they don't want to make a change, they'll just keep going through and doing the health coaching calls and go through the motion without actually making any change, which is part of, um, some of the discussions that we've had about changes to the program. There's different ways of looking at it. Right now, we're doing health coaching calls. Um, we could move to a little bit more of an outcomes of that health coaching. So instead of just going through the call, they have to set a goal, and then they have to achieve that goal by a certain date, instead of just going through the calls. Because if they're not going to put in the effort, the call can't make them do anything. This is a three-year same participant comparison, um, but I'm going to have you go to the next one, which I think really shows where the coaching comes into play. This is the thirty-four members that have had to coach in, um, all three years, so twenty twenty, I guess it's kind of four years, but we look at it one year back just to make sure we're looking at the same population. Um, and there's thirty-four members, and you'll see that there's a lot of green under that change column. And that's because this group of individuals is making, they're all making the changes that they need to, to better their health. They have almost a, um, two-point drop in their BMI, which is a pretty big deal. Um, BMI doesn't change very much. It's, um, even when somebody loses weight, on average, somebody else is gaining weight, so the average does not change very often. And if it does, it's very slight for an entire population. But this population has dropped almost five percent for their BMI, which is great to see. And that also, um, is translating to their blood pressure. Because as you lose weight, if you have higher blood pressure, your blood pressure risk goes down. So you're seeing it translate to all the different areas that it could affect as well. And the rest is all footnotes and appendix information, so I will open it up for any questions.
Wow, that was quite a report.
I tried to go through it fast so you don't have to listen to it.
You should have gave up on that right away.
Yeah.
Do you want to go over, um, because the other part of this is our, uh, annual renewal? Would you want to touch on what our annual renewal looks like?
Yes.
Like there is a little bit of an increase?
There is a little bit of an increase. Do you have it on, Heather, that you can pull it up or? It's in our secure documents, so I can't pull it up on my phone.
Why do we have an increase?
Because our costs have gone up. Um, our costs for our wellness portal that is used to administrate the program, our costs went up for that, so we have to cover that cost for it. So there was a slight increase in the, um, per member per year fee and then a slight increase in the health coaching one, just for our documentation administrative purposes. It was, um, I think around
Twelve thousand two ten.
Yeah. It was, it was a pretty small increase. I think it was less three percent, three point three percent or something like that, um, just to cover our costs.
As we s- seem to be doing all right on our numbers, correct?
Yes, yes. You do.
And as, as Brittany had mentioned, you know, we'll, I'm gonna, we have our, um, our quarterly wellness meeting coming up in July, but I'm gonna put another or a different, uh, meeting on the calendar here soon. Brittany won't be around, but I can show this since it was reported to get, show the wellness committee this aggregate report and then talk about, um, you know, if we can make, we won't be able to make any changes this upcoming year because our program will be ready to launch June first. But, um, that's part of what the employee wellness committee does when we meet, is to figure out how to supplement this wellness program that we have, this established wellness program to hit on of some of those educational points that Brittany was talking about, like, um, increasing, um, education and knowledge around what is the serving size. We do walking challenges to try and help support people getting increased physical activity and those sorts of things. So that's part of what the wellness program, the employee wellness program does, is to do things to support.
How many years have we been using this wellness program?
Was it, I think, I, it was pre-me, but I want to say I've seen twenty seventeen. Is that right, Brittany?
Yeah, I, I think twenty seventeen was the first year.
It's the first year, yeah.
I was thinking it was earlier than that. No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I, I think it was twenty seventeen.
Have we seen any, because when Kim and Jim ran in here with giving a report on our health insurance claims of, was there any change there? I mean, this project doing any good on our health insurance claims? Does anybody?
I would say yes.
And I mean, yeah, it's hard to, no, we don't get detailed.
That was the objective.
Yeah, absolutely. And that would be something that we would want to look at in greater detail as well, because we don't get detailed, um, data claim.
Yeah, yeah. That's than what the averages are for a lot of organizations of this size.
But as with anything else, I mean, like Brittany hit on, and what we try and hit on in the wellness program as well is, you know, we realize that the data that we just looked at is only the people who participated in this locked-in program. So they went to their doctor and got their annual physical, did their blood draw, or they came to our onsite one. So, you know, we have the difference between, you know, two hundred and four and the rest of the employee population where there's a, you know, a big disconnect. So that's yeah, and we won't ever know exactly who's, uh, where the claim data is contributing, where, where, you know, where's that coming from? But, um, you know, the idea is engagement and education and having an impactful, uh, effect on employee health, the bottom line, so.
Do you have to be a full-time employee to enroll in the program?
At least thirty hours.
For it to be, for it to be meaningful as far as they get the incentive discount, um, I don't, I don't think we have part-time people.
I don't think so. Um, one thing, and this would probably be something for Mike Williams. Is if, if the program was ever opened up to those not covered by the insurance, it does require some additional, um, things for him to do, like with the RAP documents and stuff, just because it's technically providing a health plan to those who are not on the health plan, um, just so that you're aware of.
Did you share this with, um, this report with Mike and Jim then?
I have not, but I can send it over to him.
Yeah, I would, uh, yeah, you have Jim too, his
I do not have Jim's email. Um, we did reach out to Mike about the contract before I had sent that over to Heather and Jana, and I didn't hear anything back from him, so.
Ken. Ken. Yeah.
She was there last week.
Yeah, if you can send me over their
Yep, absolutely.
information, I can email it over to them.
Yeah, they should have.
And I can try to make sure that they're, they're, they're very present in our wellness.
Yeah, well, and that's what I was wondering if I had Mike's most current email address, since I didn't get a response. I was like, I'm not sure. So if you can send those three over to me, I will get that emailed over to you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
No problem, Ken, yeah.
That's a lot of info.
Annual fee is twelve thousand two hundred and ten?
Yes, for the, that's for the normal participants. There is an additional fee for those who have to do the health coaching, but yes.
Yeah, and do we have what we spent last year? I have about a three hundred and seventy-five dollar increase from last year. Is that about right?
That should be about right. I can, um, I don't have the number on me that was paid for the total, but I can
I've got it figured out.
Okay, all right.
I don't have any issues with, do you need to motion for this?
I do.
I'll move that one.
Motion by Wickman and a second by Bell to approve and authorize the board chairman to sign the Lockton Consulting Agreement for June one, twenty twenty-four through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Additional discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion was carried.
Get wet.
Brittany, save.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Right. Many appointments from last week. Brian, you want to go first?
I was out at Hitchcock on Thursday for the dedication of the new pavilion, which was a really neat deal, and I came in for the mental health. Uh, little deal down in the downstairs there. Then we had conservation. And, uh, our visitor bureau got sick. Someone was, or got canceled. Someone was sick last week, so threw it out.
Yep.
Um, I was at the, uh, vet and services?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they're, they're, they're going good. Uh, also at the airport authority uh, meeting, uh, our, our airport is very low. They're looking at the next twenty years, uh, we're looking to expand, but, uh, keeping, keeping their cap- capital costs, uh, to a reasonable twenty, twenty years. I'm not looking at excessive expenditures that they can see coming down the road. But I, I really enjoy those people.
Kim? Sky?
Well. I participated in the interviews yesterday for the conservation director, and they were both excellent interviews. There were two of them, and the conservation board will be calling a special meeting so that they can take action. And then they will have their recommendations to us. I believe it will be on the agenda for Tuesday for us to approve the appointment and the salary. And I think you got an email yesterday about our website, asking for the board of supervisors to review the website changes and to provide feedback. So if anybody has time to get in to look at that, that would be helpful. And basically, that's it.
Susan, it'd be really nice to have the, uh, conservation recommendation and salary before the meeting on Tuesday, not at the meeting.
Okay.
So.
I'm sure it'll be in the packet.
Okay.
You guys, you're on the, uh, ladies on to the board, right, conservation board?
Yeah, but we're, I'm not on the interview team.
No, but
No, that, I neither mind.
Yeah, but they're, they're gonna bring
I'm on the board.
They're bringing they're bringing, they're gonna bring it to that board first.
So conservation board is going to have a special meeting, so if you would own that.
So I have to have it there.
I thought Susan was the interviewer. She was kicking us out of that meeting. I'll move to a chair.
Kristen, thank you. Ladies, thanks for, uh, messing with our Kristen, thank you. Ladies, thanks for, uh, messing with our.